I call to order this regular meeting of the Monument Town Council, Monday, October 21st. Please rise for the plate.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, Dodger, since this is here.
Ms. Simpson, will you take role?
Couldn't resist that one. Very exciting.
Councilmember Chronic.
Here.
Councilmember Romanello.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Keen.
Here.
Councilmember Abbott.
Here.
Councilmember Ferreito.
Here.
Mayor Lakine.
Here.
Councilmember Kimpel.
Councilmember Kimpel, will you unmute?
He's here. He just texted me.
Okay.
All right, he just texted me, he's here. Let me see what's going on.
Is he presenter?
He is. And he's not locked, he just has to unmute on his side.
He's showing himself unmuted. I asked him to reboot, I think it might be, I don't know.
Okay.
Well, we can just move on.
We'll move on, he's here, in spirit. I don't believe our attorneys have dialed in, they did say they will be late. Did anybody provide any disclosures of conflicts of interest to our attorneys for this meeting? Stenna?
I did not.
I did not.
Ken?
They're not gonna be remote, they're on their way.
I texted him to see if he's got conflicts of interest.
Okay. All right, well, I don't think that there's anything.
I don't think he does, but.
Yeah.
If he does, I'll let you know.
Okay.
None.
None, okay, so before us, we have an agenda and a consent agenda. Are there any modifications to the agenda?
We have a modification that we would like to remove, the Resolution 53-2024. A resolution approving the dissolution of the current print services contract with all copy products, and administering a new contract with enhanced equipment and services. We are, we have decided to not present this to you.
So is it being removed permanently?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So removing item 3C. Any other modifications?
Ken has none.
None for me.
I'm a spokesperson.
Okay, then I will look for a motion to approve the modified agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the modified agenda with the exception of item 3C and the consent agenda, is there a consent agenda?
That is the consent agenda.
Second.
Do the motion in a second, Ms. Simpson?
Mayor Pro Tim Keen.
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel.
Is he driving?
I just saw him unmute.
Councilmember Kimpel.
I just saw him unmute. Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferreito.
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott.
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic.
Yes.
Councilmember Romanello.
Yes.
All right, that motion passes seven to zero. We have three presentations, first one up is Tri Lakes Cares Community Outreach. Ms. Chapin.
Good evening, council members and community. With me today is Bill Lyons, who is our Director of Development, he's joining me to give you a little bit of an annual update and talk to you about some findings and from the study that we recently did, so I believe we've sent the presentation ahead of time, if you guys were able to pull that up. So, thank you for letting us come this evening, wanting to share a little bit of an update about the work that we've been doing. As you may know, Tri Lakes Cares is the local health and human service organization that serves residents residing in northern El Paso County. And we strive to be the community resource center that meets people where they're at regardless of how they present. We serve single seniors, we serve families, we serve single parents. Occasionally, we'll have emancipated minors that come our way. But however people are presenting and whatever their needs are, we strive to be able to either offer those services or through collaborative collaborations and partnerships, provide those resources that they might need, or provide referrals to other community resources that will offer specialized services. Do you guys have a presentation? Okay. Oh. Okay, sorry about that. No problem. No problem. Do you?
I do.
All right, so in front of you, you have our mission statement, actually, I'll point out the black and white picture is actually a picture of Celia Snyder, Patricia Atkins, and I'm blanking on the third name. Oh, down there, Betty Holloway, who are, were very imperative people who helped to start the runnings of Tri Lakes Cares. So, actual people from our community, in our community, serving our community. So, a very neat thing to see as we are in our 40th year of service, to look back at the founders who were serving our community back then.
They so often the case, they're all females.
Yep. So, the next slide you have is our service territory, so we focus on serving northern El Paso County. However, a variety of our products and services are also available to anyone that presents. We'll never turn away someone who presents that's hungry. Start by offering them cookies. Just kidding. No, we want to make sure that no one who presents walks away without food in the day that they present. So, people who live in our service territory can shop on a regular basis and are no cost grocery market. When you're looking for financial assistance, our two main focuses on eligibility for service criteria is geography and income wise. And so this is the geography here. Income wise varies based on number of people in your household. But once you meet both those criteria, you're eligible for all of our products and services that we offer. If you meet one and not the other, or neither, you're what we refer to as a secondary client, which means you might still be presenting and have a need. For instance, you could be living in a very nice lifestyle economically, but you might still need mental health services. And so, we can offer some services but not others based on how the individual presents. So, we go through eligibility screening criteria to determine where that individual or household falls, and then we service accordingly. So, that's our service territory of what we, how we serve our local community. On the next slide, you'll see a little bit of a summary of the products and services that we offer to the community. Our focus is to really create stability in an individual's life. That might be transportation. We don't have any public transportation here, so it might be doing a major repair on a vehicle so that that family can continue to drive to and from work to be able to provide for their family and keep a steady income. It may be providing food on the table, it may be keeping a roof over their head. It might be that a family is faced with eviction or foreclosure, and then they're trying to figure out their next steps. So, whatever that looks like, we try to all encompassing come around and provide the support to keep people stably housed in our community with the right resources they need to be a thriving contributing member of our community. And is this one yours?
Yeah, so if you're following our slide presentation here, we wanted to remind everyone that the legacy that Tri Lakes Cares is really the legacy of the entire area that we don't have records until about 40 years. Suffice it to say, we've probably been able to touch tens of thousands of people's lives in those four decades. And none of that would have been possible simply just by creating a nonprofit organization. We don't have any self generated revenues, we rely exclusively on donations to support the work that we do. And we've been very fortunate as an organization to have broad-based support from individuals and businesses in the town of Monument. You know, there are certain circumstances that can change people's lives dramatically and sometimes very abruptly. And we don't oftentimes, I guess there's different lenses of what you can view poverty through. The federal government has federal poverty levels that are set, and you can see, I guess it's a note on another slide here, but I'll just share with you that the current federal poverty level for a family of four is $31,000 a year. Now, that algorithm was set back in the 1960s, so it's pretty obsolete, but I think all of us knows that $31,000 would not suffice for a family of four. In fact, even twice that, 200% of the federal poverty level probably isn't enough to support a family in this community. There's a considerable amount of affluence here, and the financial need, financial hardship isn't always as conspicuous as some of the affluence that is around us. Some of the circumstances that can change people's lives so abruptly, and we've all encountered, was either personally or through families or friends. Healthcare cost, 50% of all backups, these are attributed to the cost of healthcare, accidents, disabilities, job losses. Our model, as Haley was describing, was really one of a homeless prevention. So, we look to get upstream and help people at a point in their lives where with some fairly modest support, we can stabilize that household and help them, prevent them of lapsing into poverty. All studies would show that once a family becomes homeless, that the cost of caring for that family is exponentially higher than it would have been in providing this kind of support systems that would have prevented that. The next slide is a little vignette, it's a little story about one of our clients, not the real name, the story is about Sarah. But it's a real story, it's about a real person. And we wanted to share this with you to illustrate that our work is more, it's much more than just about the numbers and statistics. So, this story, and I'll just summarize it for everyone in the room, is about a young woman with two young children, a single parent who lost her job. And she first came to us just looking for some supplemental food. And we were able to do that, but we were also able to provide some financial assistance to help with her housing expense, which then allowed her to stay in her house. And over the next several months, she was able to secure a full-time position, and then was able to move on and live independently. Again, because we were able to provide that type of support at a critical time that made a difference, that prevented her from becoming homeless. Sarah's story is not unique, it's actually very typical. And yet, I would be remiss if I didn't say we also serve families and individuals who don't have necessarily the wherewithal, the resources, and maybe the resilience that Sarah showed. And so, some people will stay in our services for a prolonged period of time. And as Haley mentioned earlier, we serve all demographics. And the testimonial that is there on that slide concerns one that is repeated over and over in the course of a year. Also, I wanted to just send a little bit more talking about the lens by which we view poverty, so if you are moving to the next slide. We live in a very affluent community, one of the most affluent in the state. And so, financial hardship is sometimes somewhat obscured, but it doesn't mean that it's not here. We know, everybody knows that there's been a exponential growth of population in the area over the last 10 years. We did a, we actually hired a firm to do a population community need assessment of our service area. The finding illustrated, indicated that the growth of the region has been 40% over the last 10 years, and is projected to grow about another 20% over the next 10 years. Probably more dramatic than even that is the soaring cost of housing. And so, a lot of our, the families that we're serving are dealing with the increased cost of housing that is, pushes many people to the precipice of homelessness. There's a study that comes out every year, and it's called a Minimum Housing Wage Study. It's done by the National Low Income Housing Coalition. It looks at each metro area and analyzes what's the cost of housing. It's based upon the idea that we should spend more, no more than 30% of our income on our housing. And if you've had a moment just to look at this slide, you can see, let's just isolate zip code 80132, since that's where we're standing today. And you can see that to maintain a two-bedroom home in 80132 takes an income of a little over $41 an hour. If you slide your eyes all the way to the right, you can see how that compares to the county and the states. It's considerably higher. There, we all know people that don't make $41 an hour. And as the population grows, as the service industry grows, whether you're working in hospitality, or you're a mechanic, or civil servant, there may be many, many positions in our community that does not bring home $41 an hour. So, it's becoming almost an untenable situation for a lot of people to maintain housing in our community. We're hearing from not just clients, but volunteers, board members, perhaps people in this room could testify that there are children that have grown up in this community, gone away to college, they come back from the college education, and they can't afford to live here. So, again, just to emphasize that our model is one that is intended to get upstream and meet people where they are at an early time, and provide them with a type of support that can stabilize their living situation and prevent them from being homeless. The, really, the kind of the last substantive slide in our presentation lists nine different domains and needs. Let me just say a little bit about that. As I mentioned, we commissioned a study from a firm called Crescendo. Crescendo's been doing community needs assessments for about 30 years now. They spent about four months working with us, they hold all the secondary data through public sources, like the Census Bureau, American Community Survey. And then they did a series of focus groups, surveys, and stakeholder groups, compiled all that data to help us, help our Board of Directors understand what the community needs are, so that we can position ourselves as an organization to be responsive to their current needs and to the emerging needs. And you see that those needs are identified in nine different categories. I'll just quickly go through those, behavioral health, childcare, community safety, finances, food access, housing, shelter, transportation, and workforce development. Historically, Tri Lakes Cares has not worked in all of those domains. We simply don't have the capacity, the resources, or even the expertise to address all of those individually. But our board took this need assessment, conducted a vision retreat, and one of the outcomes of that was that the board said, and the study bore this out, is that these nine areas of needs are all interconnected. And unless they're all being addressed, then we're probably deficient in the other areas. For instance, in this community, it's really difficult to have a job if you don't have a car. So, what the board has asked Haley and our staff to do is to commit ourselves to reaching out, having a greater impact in the areas that we have expertise and we have knowledge in, but just as importantly, to convene other provider groups, other public-private organizations, to jointly come together and acknowledge that there are current unmet needs that are only going to increase in the future, and that they can only effectively be addressed through a collaborative process. So, the needs assessment is a fairly robust document. We've just had an announcement for a couple of months now, we've been able to share it with a few of our provider partners, but it's available to anyone, certainly available to the town council, to the town staff, and other people from the community that may be listening here. So, we would encourage and invite the town, as well as the other provider organizations and businesses in the community, to join us and join our Board of Directors and our staff in coming together to address the comprehensive needs of the community.
You know, over the years, Town of Monument has played a very pivotal role in assisting the work that we do, whether it's an in-kind donation or financial support. And all of that plays a very big role in helping us be as successful as we are. And so, I want to just highlight and reiterate our thanks for that continued support over the years. You really do help us accomplish a lot for the community members. You would be surprised at some of the community members or small business owners that are here that are also seeking our services. And we really believe that we play a pivotal part in helping to keep the community stable as the economy continues to maybe go in the wrong direction, as everybody is pinching their pennies, in really helping to allow the community members here to maintain a safe, stable living situation. And we couldn't do that without your support, it really does take a community to come together to do the work that we do. And so, on behalf of those that we are serving on a daily basis, we want to share our thanks for your continued support to make that happen. Any questions?
Any questions from the council? Does Ken, Ken have his voice yet? Stenna, any questions?
None for me, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll leave you with a little goody bag of information to take home to continue to learn a little bit more about what we do. There's no cookies on that one, sorry.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Lyons and Ms. Chapin. We'll move on to Pike's Peak Small Business Development Center. Brandon Eldridge will be presenting, I believe. This is the first time that the SBDC is presented. You were supposed to, were you not supposed to be here? I think you were supposed to be here, or trying to work out something last time, right? A few months back?
Yeah, we presented for Small Business Week.
Oh, for Small Business Week.
We adopted a proclamation for Small Business Week back in April, so I appreciate that, and thank you for that support.
Well, good to see you again.
All right, you as well, thank you.
Yeah.
Well, good evening, esteemed mayor and council members. My name is Brandon Eldridge, I am the Executive Director at the Pike's Peak Small Business Development Center. I'm here tonight to just share a little bit about what we do, and potentially ways for us to collaborate more as we support small businesses in the community. So, we're going to shift gears from a little social and housing impact and resource to small business impact here. Before I get into my presentation, I want to share a quick story with you about a veteran that I know who spent 23 years in the military. He was in the Army, he was an engineer, he served as a drill sergeant. And when he got out of the military, he started a pressure washing business. And felt like that wasn't enough, so he also started a home inspection business, and felt like that wasn't enough. So, he also contracted with a roofing company. So, he was running three businesses simultaneously, and never went to business school. I don't think he ever used the word entrepreneur in his life. Probably didn't understand P&Ls and balance sheets, as many of us who run businesses know that's prudent. And when he finished after about 10 years, he closed his business and just retired. So, that person was my father, and his story is part of my why. I'm surrounded by entrepreneurs in my family, my great-grandmother owned a diner in northern Indiana. My grandfather had a screen printing shop as a side business. My father ran a few businesses, as I mentioned, and somehow my sister has managed to make money off of TikTok and social media. So, I don't know how she's done that, so don't ask me.
It's not a business.
Keep asking her, I don't get it, but she makes money, I promise. So, that's part of my why and why I do what I do. This year, our center is going to serve 750 small businesses with over three hours of free consultative services to each of those entrepreneurs. I want to share a little bit about how we do that and some of our overlap with the Town of Monument. I have a team of four, and so we have four people that put on all that work. And we contract with up to 50 consultants at any given time to help provide those services to the community. We are geographically aligned with El Paso and Teller County. So, we actually cover all four corners of this county and all the way up through Cripple Creek. We have seven satellite locations that we operate through in that, within that rather. And you can move forward a couple of slides there. So, the Town of Monument is one of our satellite locations. We actually collaborate with Terry and the Tri Lakes Chamber on a monthly workshop series and supporting on things like the Business Expo that many of you attended last week, which, for all intents and purposes, was a beautiful and class act event, so great job, Terry. What we do is a lot of education and support for small businesses. So, we do that through webinars, in-person workshops, that we do a lot of collaboration with our local chambers. We're actually members of all nine chambers in the Pike's Peak region, try managing those memberships. And you can move forward there. We do a lot of events, and so I'm going to highlight two events here in my presentation today. And then also, we are the point team for cybersecurity for the state of Colorado. So, we actually manage seven cybersecurity professionals on our team. And if somebody came to us and said we got hacked, we can support them, but we prefer to do a lot of proactive support when it comes to data protection. So, on the next slide, you'll see a wheel, and it really just articulates the core of our work. When somebody comes to us, we want to make sure that they've got a business plan and they know what they're doing. As I mentioned, my father didn't really have a plan, and so he didn't know that you could probably sell a business and sell some of those contracts off. We oftentimes think about the seven habits of a highly effective person begin with the end in mind. And so, the business plan helps you begin with that end in mind. And so, we do a lot of coaching on how to get there. And so, some of these things on that wheel kind of articulate a lot of the programming and the categories that our consultants serve in, whether it's access to capital, managing your cybersecurity stance, marketing, and of course, human capital. So, I mentioned a couple of events that we have. Our next one is coming up on November 1st at Great Wolf Lodge. It's our 17th year of hosting the Veterans Small Business Conference in this region. My office has had the privilege of doing it for those 17 years through various collaborations over the years. This year, we're doing it with the Colorado VBAC, which shares an office with me at Catalyst Campus, and with the Minority Business Office hosted by OEDIT out of Denver, so the Office of Economic Development and International Trade. That's a picture of last year's ceremonies, you can see a picture of me standing there holding our beautiful banners. We're expecting a really great turnout, we actually have, we're expecting 250 entrepreneurs, 34 resource partners, nine workshops throughout the day. And yes, we will feed you breakfast and lunch. And as a special bonus, if you stay all day, we'll give you a free pair of underwear from our keynote speaker, Sheath Underwear. So, that is true. Okay, you're in, fellas, this is an event for you. On the next slide, you'll see Small Business Week, and we actually adopted a resolution for National Small Business Week last year here in these chambers, and I'm very grateful for that support. It is an outward proclamation to say, yes, we support our small businesses. This is a big event that we run every year, it's usually a compilation of about five different events throughout the week. We're very intentional about providing education, resources, and also an award ceremony where we get to kick back and celebrate a little bit too. So, specifically in the Town of Monument, last year alone, we served over 20, we served 28 businesses that are within this city limits. We also offered over 120 hours of free consultative services to those businesses. That's outside, of course, of the workshops that we do, so this is purely consulting time. If you gave a modest dollar amount to that, $50 an hour, that's over $6,000 worth of free community service that we provided to those small businesses. And anybody who's run a business know that $50 an hour for consulting is very modest. And then finally, if you would like to stay in touch with what we're doing and make sure that you're hearing about all the great work that we are doing, and not only that, but see some of the grants that we're locating here. We actually every month will publish several grants that. that my grant writer will actually publish for small businesses. We publish all of the community events across the region so that people know how to network and where to find those things. And occasionally, we get a few really good success stories. So I would encourage you all to sign up for our newsletter and stay in touch with the work that we're doing. That's it for me tonight. I just want to say thank you for allowing us to continue to serve in this community. We are entrepreneurial in spirit, meaning we are very creative in the work that we do. And just know that we cannot do this work without support for municipalities and wonderful people like yourself. So thank you.
Any questions or comments from the council?
Just a clarification. So the four of you cover El Paso and Teller?
Correct.
Okay.
So across the state, we have 14 SBDCs that feed into our statewide network. We cover a smaller geographic area because we're more dense. I actually have one SBDC that covers 13 counties northeast. She covers a lot of ground there. So because we're a more dense community, I only have two counties that we cover. The only smaller geographic SBDC, of course, is our Denver SBDC.
I see you have Danny Moore well situated in several of these pictures.
Yes. He was our keynote last year for our Veterans Conference.
He's also an entrepreneur.
He is, yes. He was a fantastic keynote.
He's a good speaker.
Yes, sir.
I walked lots of miles with him a few years ago here.
Oh, that's great. I love that. Yeah, he's a great personality, a really excellent human being, a great entrepreneur, and we were glad to have him at our event last year. This year, we've got three keynotes throughout the day. Damian McKay from UC Health will be our morning. We have a theme throughout the day of mental health as a veteran entrepreneur. So then at lunch, Bobby Patton with Sheath Underwear, he's going to talk about his journey from Afghanistan and dealing with PTSD and literally getting electromagnetic zaps and all the things that go with PTSD and being an entrepreneur. And then we're going to round off the day with a Navy veteran who's going to talk about leadership and entrepreneurship. So.
Good place for the Navy to be speaking.
At the end. I have flyers for our Veterans Conference that I'll share. I'll put them on the table out here for you guys. Am I allowed to approach?
Of course.
Thank you.
The police are so far in the back, they'll never get here.
He doesn't move very fast anyway.
Right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, you come armed with cookies. What are you going to do to us?
Throw them at you.
Right, throw them. Okay. Next up is Emily Trujillo with our employee survey results.
That makes me happy that you're excited.
Absolutely, yeah.
Perfect. Alrighty. So I am here this evening to explain to you the employee survey that we have done for the town. It has been a long time coming. It's called the Employee Satisfaction Survey. We actually partnered with our current software program that we have for personnel, Bamboo HR. They do have that ability to be able to do a survey. Just really quick, I want to go over the details of the main goals, like how it processes our results, some of the categories, as well as some of the actionables that we've already pulled from those results. A quick overview, we did the survey through Bamboo HR. It's our existing HRIS. This was at no extra cost to the town. That's why we decided it was the best route to start.
Yeah.
That's great. With also having it in Bamboo HR, it aids with the tracking. You can set the dates. You can do custom tags. You can make it really more specific to what we need for the town. It creates a layer of anonymity. So since it is through a third party, but it also helps us with the tracking. It does keep the reports for us. I'll go into that a little bit more in detail later. We did have the survey open for one week. That is timeframe set by Bamboo. And we did it September 5th through September 12th. Once we had that, we did take a couple of weeks to analyze. We shared that with the leadership team so that we had an idea of what the results presented. And then we also took time to share it with the employees themselves so they can see the results too. We also shared the parts that we would have action items. Kind of you'll see in the results, a surprise that we are already currently working on some of the items that we pulled up in that survey. Purpose, of course, we all know employees are our greatest asset. Those are the ones that we have to take care of, and their feedback is imperative to our success. Because if we're not doing a great job, they will definitely let us know. They will let us know how we can improve. The anonymity gives the employees a chance to share.
Can you try to avoid the pop-ups, please?
So it gave the employees a chance to share their comments and their views freely without fear of reprisal. So also, the collection of feedback allows the leadership to really target the areas that need attention. So the areas that we might think need attention are not necessarily what the employees will think. And the great part about having it through Bamboo is it will run every six months automatically for us. So it'll be able to track the progress, the feedback continually. Once we have more than one to two reports in there, in addition to this one that we just completed, we'd be able to see the track as well as the comments too. So to go into a little bit of how the how the E N P S is what it's called, so Employee Net Promoter Score, and how Bamboo really keeps it anonymous. It breaks it down to every employee is assigned employee number within Bamboo. But when they click on the URL that Bamboo provides, it actually takes it, deletes the employee numbers, and then sends it as an anonymous demographic. The only thing it keeps is what department they work for. So that way, we can break it down into public works. If we want to break it down into finance, we want to break it into admin. That is as specific as it gets. But the best part about Bamboo is if there are under five people in that area, you could not see the responses. It just gives you an overall score to help maintain that anonymity. So how do we get this to work? So what Bamboo does is the day before, it actually sends out an email that we are able to customize to let the employees know that a survey is coming. It also goes into how it is anonymous and where to expect it. Just a quick little snip of what it looks like. The survey itself only asks two questions. First question is a rating scale from zero to 10. The second is a form of what you recommend to make this place great or what you would recommend to make this place better. Two simple questions. We got quite a few answers. Super excited about that. When we had our meetings with the employees prior to the survey, we made sure that Madeline and I both expressed to have great feedback. Because without great feedback, there can be no change. If someone just mentioned, "I'm not happy," how are we supposed to help with that? But if you give us tangible, tangible comments, we'd be able to make something happen. So now into the results. I'd like to report we got an 80% response rate for our employees. That is extremely impressive. I was going to be happy with a 65%. We got an 80. So that's amazing. What I believe, and what we believe as a leadership team, is that the fact of being anonymous helped get that score so high. So once we got that score, Bamboo itself also sorted for us the tags of the top likes and the five dislikes for us. So that way, we can see the very main ideas and focus that we need to have. And also, just a main goal that you guys know all the time, constant improvement. That's what we want to make sure that we're doing around here. So this screen is an overall view of the results. If you look at the score range, it's a negative 100 to 100. So the fact that it shows a two, we're right in between there. We're doing okay, but we can do better. Can do better. Also, with the 80 response rate, the 63 out of 79. I just really wanted to break that down for you. And then how does the rating scale work? So anyone that scores us from a 10 to a nine is called a promoter. So those will get us into the green. Anyone that rates an eight to a seven is a neutral. So that doesn't affect the score up or down. Keeps you right in the middle. But anything from a zero to six is a detractor. So those are good ones that we're going to have to really focus on. We need some attention. Not going to go through all of these, but this definitely just lets you take a view of the amount of tags that Bamboo offers. And this is just the ones that are default. If we wanted to call something out or make something more specific, we will definitely have that option. Know that we're looking for doing that in the next survey. All right, the top five likes. So if you look at the top left, they're in the order that they were rated. People, culture, community, atmosphere, leadership, and management. I wanted to break down the promoters, neutrals, and detractors for you to prove to a point that even if someone gave us a lower score, they could still have positive comments. That's the algorithm that Bamboo has. It reads their sentence. It takes the content. They can see if it is a positive, a neutral, or a dislike. Then go into the dislikes. So we have compensation, communication, reward and recognition and value, culture, process, policies, and regulations. You take a look, the very top one is compensation. We didn't even have a promoter comment that it needed some attention. These really made us confirm what we're already in the process of working on. Okay, speaking to the upcoming actions. So we're going to look, top one, compensation. We currently have an RFP out for a third party to do a compensation survey for us. Hopefully, we should have an answer in a couple of months. So about the solid choice that we have to be able to fix that. Communication, culture shift to put communication in the forefront of what we do. So we are going to ask, what is the best way that you receive communication? Because we know not everybody receives communication the same way. Some are visual, some are readers, and some actually have to be the twoers. Reward, recognition, and value. So we asked, what would you like us to do? What type of rewards and recognitions do you see and do you value? How can we aid you in feeling valued? Processes and policies. We're working towards increasing accountability for all employees and processes and policies. We're also working on finalizing the handbook for any updates that we are doing as well. So we're already in process of doing that. All right, and that is it. Any questions?
Questions? I've got a couple. So was this the very first time we've ever conducted an employee survey of this kind?
I believe so. This is the first, but not the last.
Well, I'm glad we are on the right track to actually gather data from staff and be able to take action. How many departments are under five employees?
I believe three to four.
So can we work with Bamboo to consolidate so that the information is not hidden from you?
Absolutely. That is something that I can go in and change their job description within Bamboo. It'll just be a reclassification into.
It could use temporarily, or I'd just like to see that you have access to data that's not artificially hidden by a lack of people in the department.
You can still see the comments as a whole. So if you look at Town of Monument as a whole, you'll still be able to see those comments. But that is one thing that I did think that we need to broaden that. So if we pass, say, someone, public works, they're broken down into different sectors. We can put it all as a public works entity, knowing that each individual have a different responsibility.
Okay. And then the last thing that I had, I was hoping to see more of the actual data. When I was going through the packet, the data that you presented, I'm very familiar with net promoter scores and going through this in my professional career for many years. But as manager, I was hoping to see what some of the comments were that from both promoters and detractors. I also took note that culture was recognized on both likes and dislikes. So would like to understand what it is about the culture. So if that information could be shared with council, that I think would be beneficial, given what we went through
Yes.
previously, that got us to this point.
An additional little survey to get more information that we are going to be releasing this week to ask those type of questions, to get a little bit more clear of the question.
Okay, so you, there was only two questions asked total?
Total, yeah.
Okay, and that's what is offered by Bamboo? Just two questions?
That one is offered by Bamboo, but it did give us a lot of content that we're able to read and see some of those specifics. We are unable to share some of the comments just to keep that anonymity, but if you wanted generalizations, I would be able to do that.
In the future, we'll be able to continue to do these kind of surveys, and we'll be able to ask different questions. We've also, we'll have some additional follow-up things that dive a little bit more deeper into some of the things that we saw in the survey as well. So we didn't want to have a ton of questions because we intend to keep surveying our staff. So throughout, you know, every couple of months.
Okay, well, like I said, based on what happened over the last few months and the changes that have been made, I think I'd like to see some more data and then updates on the action plans that... And then we can be hands-off. But just because of what's been going on, I think we should be entitled to a little bit more information. But otherwise, I'm, I am super impressed with the participation rate.
Yes.
I recall not-so-subtle hints to ensure my last team was participating, and you know, it's all voluntary.
Yep.
And you can't be punished for not doing it, but they know who didn't do it.
Yes, that is one thing that I'm very proud of our staff is the amount of responses and ratings that we received.
So this is probably a little bit difficult of a survey to do in light of proximity to changes around here. So because it takes time to probably figure out how things are going to go. So you know, I suspect in the future that you'll get different answers just because there's a time behind it.
Question, but this is just the beginning. And we know there was a lot of items that need to be addressed. We're starting. Hopefully, there's one that comes next. We'll have some different comments that we're able to look deeper into.
I ask them. I'm glad you're doing this.
Were the responses by email? Is that how it was all done?
So the invitation was sent through email, but Bamboo HR is their personnel platform that we use. All the employees have access to Bamboo, and it's set in there that they have just to click a link and they can see that it's in Bamboo either beyond PC, laptop, or even a mobile device.
Yeah, I was just wondering what the ability of everyone is to access. That was why I asked the question.
I think everybody has email, right? All-town staff.
Yeah, all-town staff and all-town staff have access to some sort of device that they can take the survey on.
Thank you.
Quick question. Do you foresee an opportunity later on, maybe in a year, to do a longer survey? To kind of start slow and then... do much more in-depth?
Probably complete a couple of these, just very basic, you know, how are we doing? How would you rate us? See how the feedback goes. And if there starts to be a broader amount of comments, maybe that's the time. Probably within a year or two, we're hoping to, yes.
Thank you.
Oh, great job, Emily and Val and the rest of staff for, for getting this done. This is step one in the right direction.
Yeah, thank you very much, Emily.
I didn't, I didn't ask if Councilmember Abbott or Kimpel had any questions for Emily?
I did not. Thank you, though. That was really insightful.
Is he still without a voice?
I think he just unmuted himself, so. Try this again, still without.
Yes.
How do you all hear me?
Hey. Oh.
Hi.
Hi. Do you have any questions or comments for Emily?
Uh, no. Great job, Emily. I really like to see the participation amount because that, that's important. Just slightly disappointed with that. There was only two questions and there wasn't anything about a comparison of overall of the past several months as compared to previously, a thought or feeling process on how the climate has been within each department.
Understand, and hopefully when we do complete this once again in March, we'll be able to see some of those comments that show the difference.
Yeah, I just think that's important because then you'll start seeing a trend and flush out some of the remarks and then come up with a way forward on how to take corrective action to improve longevity-wise.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. So we have no resolutions tonight. And we do have a discussion item related to town manager evaluation, but our attorneys are walking in. Hang on, Emily. Emily, we're gonna, we're gonna take five. The attorneys are walking in. I want to give them an opportunity to set up, and so we'll take a we'll take a 10-minute recess. So we'll start up again at seven thirty. All right, Jim will be back. Next up, we will start off with our discussion item, Town Manager Evaluation. Mr. Hill, you're up again. We don't hear from you for months at a time, and now you are, yeah, in fact, I think you're going to run the rest of the meeting.
Sounds good. Do that.
I'm sure.
Right. So the packets or the examples that I have are in your packets. There should be two items there. One is for Graves LLC. They have a quote for you there, and the other is Employers Council. If you take a look at Graves, it does have two different separate pricings for different levels. The first one includes just for the town manager, and that would include their direct reports as well as town council and mayor to have their feedback. That one is about fifty-six hundred dollars before the executive sessions or any type of traveling that they have to do. The second one is a little bit less. It is the twenty-eight hundred. That is just with the town council mayor and the town manager. So that would just be a smaller group for feedback. It's all dependent on what you as a council will like to have as feedback to rate the pricing and how involved you would like to be.
Are you saying the first one is a, is a three sixty plus council and the other one is just council?
Correct. Correct. So they have two different views of it, depending on how much information you'd like. So then if we take a look at the next one from the Employers Council, the price is a little bit less since we are a member of the Employers Council. It would be eight hundred, I believe, for the town manager. And then if you take a look deeper into the quote, it does talk about the hours of them being here in person, so that my guess is going to be around seventeen to eighteen hundred dollars, just as a nice base. Take a look, read through both of the quotes and proposals, see which one kind of fits a little bit better with the expectations. Just wanted to provide those for you. I will be here to help expedite with any questions, aid as needed throughout the whole entire process. And we can hopefully get this done as quickly as you would like, whatever your timeline is.
Is the, at the high end, is that earmarked in the budget, just in case we were to go that high?
Yeah, it would be both available if you chose to do it in twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-five. The funding is there.
Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead.
The one thing that we were looking at previously was to establish goals and objectives. And so that's part of either one of these, is that correct? Okay, and the input would come from?
The council. The council and feedback that is received.
Okay.
Oh, and I remember it as, there was no third, we couldn't find a third, right? A third company?
Correct.
Okay.
I've reached out to probably about four or five. These are the two main ones that I got in as a response.
Yeah, I know Employers Council was recommended by multiple municipalities, CML. They show up to all the events, so. That's all I had, and thank you, Mr. Kimpel. I agree with you. If you would like to, is your voice no longer working? Feel free to speak up. Oh, well, if not, Mr. Kimpel is in agreement with the three sixty along with the council comments, and we can, we can have Bob provide us a copy of the goals and objectives that he was forwarded and have him sent out to council for review. Make sure we're all on agreement with them.
I believe Bob did send those out several months ago, so you should have them in your email.
Okay, perfect. So we just need to go look through our email. Councilmember Kimpel, and everybody should provide their feedback to Bob, and then we can discuss probably those objectives and goals at another meeting.
We're giving individual feedback as well.
On the objectives that, goals and objectives that Ken sent to Bob for review, and he can send them out for us to review. And if we're in agreement with them, or we want to trash some, we don't want to make this too long. We don't want to make this a thirty, thirty goals and objectives, whatever, but fifty, a hundred, whatever. They're just.
It's one goal in twenty-seven.
How many were there, Ken? Was there a thousand?
No, there was one goal with twenty-seven subparts. Now, I believe there was, it's somewhere, I think it was seven, if I'm not mistaken. There's either five or seven.
Well, but they were sent out before and they were more substantial, requesting feedback from council too, and I think those are the ones that Bob sent, were they not?
So Bob forwarded Councilmember Kimpel's
Oh.
suggestions.
Okay, so we should all go back and look for that email from Bob and provide any feedback to Bob, and then we can have him or Allison or Rebecca, depending on Bob's situation, to review those with us in public and decide on them, and then we can at that point also provide direction on which, which one of these vendors we want to go with.
And also, just as an addition to that, I believe both will be able to aid in that objectives too. If you had some and you wanted it clarification, or if you needed in all those, they'd be able to supply support for that as well.
Perfect. Okay. All right, any other questions or comments for Emily? Because I think she's used up her, her her time for the year.
Oh, no.
Oh, okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, is there a particular date you would like us to bring this back to you?
I would have to go and look at our drafts. For me.
Can't we do a lot of this by email?
Well.
Not the decision necessarily, but I mean, going over the, the goals and objectives.
Goals and objectives, you can provide your feedback to
To Mr. Cole.
Mr. Cole.
Close election, like December or January?
So eleven four. If nothing has changed, we've got two ordinances and a resolution. That's sort of light. I don't know if
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Eighteen executive sessions. And then ten twenty-one. Why don't we? I think ten twenty-one is already, oh.
That's today.
Never mind. Eleven twelve. I was looking to see if there was an eleven.
Eleven eighteen would be the next one.
Eleven eighteen looks like we could probably do it then.
Okay.
That's what I, that's what I'm looking at.
We'll send draft agendas to you again after tomorrow's leadership meeting, but we'll put it in for the eighteenth, and then you can just let us know if it's too full.
Okay. Okay, so next up, public comments. Individuals attending in person may raise their hand to indicate their desire to comment. Individuals attending via Teams may raise their hand digitally to comment via connected devices. Please lower your hand when finished with your comments. Comments are limited to three mi- minutes. Is there anybody who can speak less than three minutes of time? Haley?
Can I comment on the stipend for council members since it's not on the agenda?
It's not on the agenda, so you can speak to whatever you wish.
I'll share with you my comments from last time. In the role that I have for the organization, for TriLakes Care is always making sure that our clients, their voice is heard and that they have a seat at the table. So this comment comes in that vein. I, offering council members a small stipend for their service provides several important benefits, particularly in reducing barriers for community members who might be considering running for office. There's a few points I wanted to mention. It encourages diverse participation. A stipend can make public service more accessible to individuals who may otherwise be unable to afford time commitment, such as those with lower incomes, young professionals, parents. It ensures that a wide range of voices and backgrounds are represented in local government. Offset personal costs. Serving on council also often comes with personal expenses, expenses such as time away from work, childcare, transportation, and other costs. And a stipend helps offset these burdens, making it feasible for more individuals to serve. Values, the time and the effort. A stipend acknowledges that serving on council requires a significant investment of time and effort, which we know you all give willingly. And while it may not match a full salary, it can show respect for the commitment involved and encourage, encouraging qualified candidates to run for office. It fosters equity. This is the most important in my mind. By reducing financial barriers, a stipend helps level the playing field. Without it, only those with financial flexibility might consider running, which could lead to underrepresentation of certain community groups. Increases retention and engagement. Offering council compensation can improve retention of council members by reducing burnout of financial strain. It also signals that the role is important, which can enhance member engagement and commitment. I value all of your comments from the last meeting. You all brought very great points to the table. But I will urge you to consider what that might look like for the people who are not at this table. And for the people whose voice you want to hear and you want them to be involved in local government, many of you can take the stipend and choose to donate it back to the police department so that the police can hire more policemen or donate it to your charity of choice, or you can keep it. But I encourage you to consider that as a benefit to the community members who are not currently serving.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other public comments? Anybody online that would like to make a public comment?
I see no hands raised, Mayor.
Okay. Terry? Well, I just, you know, I'm gonna make sure I give her the opportunity because she's here. Okay, future agenda items. Oh, I know she's chomping at the bit.
I always have something.
Okay, perfect.
Um, the Kiwanis who are working with us on the Heart of Monument Park would like to present the design, the final design to council on November eighteenth.
Excellent. Any others?
That's all.
Staff, any future agenda items that you want to add? No? All right, don't, don't say I didn't ask. All right, council comments. I've got one. Is there any other members of the council that have anything?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, 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 where do you want to go?
Oh, I can wait.
Oh, wait, no, I just wanted to say, I think that Madeline, what I didn't think, I know she sent out some sample letters at the Fountain Creek Watershed District Meeting. They were looking for the town to send a support letter for the Fox Run Regional, so as we, they would like to do that. Also, I know that at the tour that Madeline and some of us were at, we had talked about having Ally come up here and talk about in lieu of fees and her attempts to try to get in the fut- in the, hopefully near future projects done up here north, not just in Pueblo, and she was going to come present, I think, on November eighteenth. Did we get that handled? Is that handled? That was all I, that's all I had. Thank you.
I'm in agreement with the letter. I assume that staff will draft one that's appropriate and provide it to us.
Yeah, we can do that. I just wanted to be sure that council agreed with being in favor of that.
Yeah, that's all I had.
Yeah, I think I went to I think they had an event there. It was a couple of years ago.
They did a presentation here too.
No, but I'm like, I was, I was there. They were showing us where
Everything was going to be.
Yeah, and I can't remember how long ago it was.
They also did one at, at the brewery, Bikes, Bikespeak Brewery.
I definitely wasn't at that.
Yeah. It was at Fox Run?
It was in the nature.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, not the bar part.
Yeah, the buffer.
Okay, so I wanted to bring up, because TriLakes has been here and added a picture of me with one of their members and a bunch of turkeys. It is turkey time. It is the middle of October, and we need to, if the council is going to be doing their annual turkey get-together thing, I am happy to go get the turkeys, deliver the turkeys, invite you all to be in the picture, so it's not just me next year, and then I will collect whatever money we, we need. So please let me know if you're going to participate, but I will be getting turkeys in everybody's name. And, and we will we can have a contest rolling them from Safeway because they're, they're hard as rocks, so they'll just go.
It's a turkey bowl.
Turkey bowl, right. All right, that was my only comment. Any other council members have something?
Yes, I just have one quick one. So we, we had our grand opening at the Limbaugh Park, and I want to say a special, give a special kudos to Madeline for putting that all together. It seems to be a very popular place. Every time I drive by, there's a zillion kids out there, and it's good to see them outside.
Nice. We've had one complaint.
Oh, great.
The yep, the merry-go-round is not fast enough. I had to inform this person that there's a governor on it to prevent us from being sued for whiplash or any other harm that may come to a child, but
Yeah, and sadly, the old merry-go-round got bit up, but it wasn't probably half as much as it's worth. I'd love to have had that thing in my backyard. If I could have figured out a way to get it there, I probably would have done it, but so goodbye to the old merry-go-round. Somebody's going to have a good time with that.
As long as we don't get sued for it.
We won't get sued for it.
Well, thank you. That all is due to the hard work of our park staff and, and our public work staff to make that happen.
Yeah, definitely. I didn't want to leave them out because it's a, it's a big effort to do all that.
And I just wanted to remind everyone that Wednesday- And I just wanted to remind everyone that Wednesday is Heart of Monument Donation fundraiser at.
Harito Loco.
Harito Loco, thank you.
Eleven to close.
Yeah.
I don't know if I can eat that many hours.
You can just go once.
Just go once?
Yeah, just just go once.
Okay, very good. All right, we will move on to our executive session, so for those of you who are in the room, we are going to boot you out. Um, we have two executive sessions, and um, I don't. I don't know that we are going to be able to adjourn uh in executive session, so we will come out back into public and adjourn. Afterwards, so while everybody is getting gone, we'll take another recess real quick and um. Yeah, yeah, so if someone would like to read us into executive session.
Okay, I move that we go into executive session, person went to. CRS twenty four dash six dash four oh two four B for a conference with the town attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice. On specific legal questions regarding limiting long-term residential rentals. Opened immediately by.
Oh.
Another executive session person went to CRS twenty four dash six dash four oh two four E. To to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiation. Developing strategy for negotiations and instructing negotiators regarding future water system.
Second.
Motion and seconds. For each. Executive session, Ms. Simpson, will you take the roll separately, please?
Yes. Mayor Protem King.
Yes.
Councilmember Kimple.
Yes.
Councilmember Pranay.
Yes, yes.
Mayor Lakine.
Yes.
Councilmember Ferretti.
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott.
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella.
Yes.
And for the second executive session, Councilmember Chronic.
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella.
Yes.
Mayor Protem King.
Yes.
Councilmember Kimple.
Yes.
Mayor Lakine.
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott.
Yes.
And Councilmember Ferretti.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, um, oh, we don't need to really take. Uh, are you, are you staying? Okay. Bye. Uh.
Nice.
Thanks for coming. Okay, we'll give a few minutes for Ms. Simpson to depart, uh, we will be coming back, though. For adjournment, so. Sorry.
Don't leave.
And Will, you're going to be shifting us to a different Teams channel? All right, will you let it, let us know when that's been, when everybody's on and. Cool, thank you. Is Ken coming back?
Uh, he's, he, yes, he's coming back, and he also, oh, Santa's there.
Okay.
I'm here, yeah, he.
Okay, we're just waiting.
Switch, so.
We're just waiting for Ken, Santa.
Okay.
He he's probably laying cable and trying to hook to the Starlink and whatever else he's trying to do.
Plongetree.
Rats and foils, I don't know.
Hey, while we're waiting for Ken, um, Simpson, was there? Um. Any mail? Really? No mail in two weeks? Okay.
Thank you.
Bye bye me. Come on, Ken.
There he is, yay.
All right, we are back from executive session, all council members are present, um. As far as I think board direction goes, uh, to our attorneys is to complete the Q and A portion of. Uh, to the. Water authorities, questions that came up previously. Um. Uh, and then schedule a workshop with. Our uh water attorney, our water engineer, relevant town staff. And if if we need our attorneys also to be present that are not water attorneys, also to to be there. Um, and then I think the final thing would be. For staff to continue pursuing. Um. Can I say it, I can say it right without, yeah, because it's not. Uh, future water right options for the town, renew re renewable water options that we discussed many moons ago.
I I would quantify by saying aggressively pursue.
I I will agree with aggressively pursue. With with updates sent. By staff to council on where we are at least weekly. Until we have another meeting set up that's going into executive session, discuss the specifics.
All right, I will do that, um. I'll get back with you whether weekly is really a good thing or not, because I know when you're dealing with these, things don't happen usually on a weekly basis, but. I will get the point across.
Ju- ju- just so long as you make a point of aggressively. I think we're, I think we're all in concurrence with aggressively pursue, there you go, I think that'll, that'll do it.
We're, we're two years behind with, behind the ball, so.
We, we.
Thirty years?
What, what?
Well, yeah.
This board, this council. Came on two years ago.
Yeah.
We are two years behind the ball, sorry.
Okay, um, if there's nothing further, I will look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, third, fourth.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.